Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 6, 2012. Just to get the rules and procedures out of the way for this evening's meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to City Council. So you'll need to contact the City of Des Moines Clerk or Community Development Department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request after presentation by staff. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission, after motion, will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, and there are two of those tonight, I guess there's only one of those, will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you, when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209 should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are available for meetings in the council chambers. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable, Channel 7, for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. Watch for the, or click on the "Watch Live" link for those meetings. Has everybody had a chance, or first of all, we have quorum. Thank you, Kathy. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meetings, or minutes, minutes, meetings, minutes, something like that?
Move approval.
All right. The motion to approve the minutes is written. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. It carries. One abstention? Okay, I didn't see it. The consent items, we have one. Item number one is a request from SPTIHS Property Trust doing business as Union Park Health Services, represented by David Haggerty to rezone property located at 2401 East 8th Street. Is there any additional consent items we want to move on?
If I may. Item one, although it's on the consent, they're actually requesting it be continued to the meeting of the 20th of December. They weren't able to, it was continued initially so they could schedule a neighborhood meeting. The Neighborhood Association asked them to attend their regular meeting, and they agreed to, and that'll be, I believe, on the 13th. So they've requested it be continued.
Okay, so it's continued so that they can have a public meeting?
Yeah, correct. Their neighborhood meeting, correct.
All right, great. Is there a motion to continue this? Surely. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. It passes. Item number two, this item was continued from November 1st. It's a request from Smith Home Restorations, represented by Troy Smith, to rezone property located at 2040 East Walnut Street. First of all, we're to determine whether the proposed amendment is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. Amend to Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial auto-oriented, and rezone from R160, one-family low-residential, low-density residential district to a limited C2. Jason, you're presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. This is an aerial showing the property on East Walnut, on the north side, near the west of the railroad tracks, near East 21st Street. Just a quick couple pictures. You saw these at the last meeting. Centric Properties, got an existing garage structure. It's a relatively small lot, as all of these are, on this north side with houses, just being the one particular lot that doesn't have a dwelling on it. I believe it's 40 feet wide, just showing back into the property, and then just kind of down the street. At the last time, this is before you, you had asked the applicant to meet with staff and perhaps narrow down the list of uses. There was some uses that were discussed, the contractor office, small engine repair, carpenter shop, craft shop, but you had asked that that be looked at a little closer. So we did do that. I met with the applicant November 1st. In addition to looking at uses, he did also provide me with the revised site sketch, kind of outlining the property. So that's this. The first page of the staff report listed out the uses that he's agreeable to with regard to limitations. So what's before you is a proposal, basically, to a limited, limited C2, limited to these uses. Basically, all R160 uses, property now is zoned R160, so that would stay. And in addition, you'd have the potential for auto detailing, a bicycle shop, carpenter's shop, contractor's office, electrician's shop, hobby workshop, plumbing shop, printing shop, office, sheet metal shop, small engine repair, tire shop. So that's the information that you had asked for. At the meeting, there was some discussion about the ability to get a rebuild or financing, and that was a concern to the applicant. After the meeting, I did talk with our zoning enforcement staff. If they were to obtain a use variance, which we had discussed that at the last meeting, let me take a step back before I get too far down, but this property has lost grandfathering rights to commercial use. There's none on the books. So for them to use this property for a commercial venture, they need to first seek rezoning, which is what they're doing right now. If rezoning is denied by the commission, or, excuse me, the City Council, they do have the option of going to the zoning board of adjustment and seeking a use variance to allow some sort of commercial use of the property. At that point, they would offer up, you know, a list similar to this, maybe some other conditions, but they can't seek that use variance until the zoning is denied first. At the previous meeting, there was concern on the applicant's behalf that if they ended up getting denied rezoning and had to get a use variance, that they were concerned that they wouldn't be able to get financing, they're concerned about rebuild letter. So following our last meeting, I did visit with our zoning enforcement staff. They would, with that use variance, a, what we call a 60% rebuild letter could be issued. We issue those on a regular basis, and essentially what that says is that if the building is destroyed by more than 60% of its value to repair, damage, however you want to phrase it, that they cannot rebuild it, but if it's less than 60%, then they can rebuild and continue on. So that's new information. The other thing that I don't think that was, that I maybe didn't come across, or I didn't present very well at the last meeting, is that with this property being as small as it is, and this building, this building is already on, is on the property line, basically. That's, even if the rezoning is approved, and they have a use established there that's allowed by zoning, this building doesn't conform with the setbacks, and still, so this is still a non-conforming building, they still have zoning issues. So they're, you know, I don't think it's, staff still believes that the best solution here is not rezoning, is not amending the land use plan. Let them seek a use variance. If the zoning is approved, they're still going to have to go to the board. They do not, the zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot residential buffer protection zone. These properties to the east and west are zoned R160, so that means that the zoning ordinance would require them to have the building and parking setback 10 feet. They obviously can't provide that, so they're going to be going to the board one way or the other for a variance of some sort of standard, one way or the other. So, like I said, we're still recommending denial. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, please, Jason.
Go ahead, Will.
Thank you. On your map, plan here, is the back lot a subject of the rezoning as well as the front parcel?
Yeah, their whole parcel. This is one platted lot, and that's what they're proposing to rezone. This just kind of demonstrates, you know, where the building, there was the parking. This pavement here, just as a side note, this actually extends on to the adjoining property, and the applicant has worked with them to provide them parking. Their property line is, kind of runs along back through here. What's brown is, that shows where our privacy fence is.
So the tire repair shop could take place in this area to the north as well?
It would have to go through a site plan process and be paved, or an addition done. There would be steps, but...
Use variance can limit the area of the use also.
Any other questions? Jason, just so everybody's clear, they're still going to have to go to the Board of Adjustment no matter what happens.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Can we have the applicants please step forward? Give your names and addresses.
My name is Troy Smith of 328 Marleau Parkway, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm the owner of 2040 East Walnut.
Okay, sir.
My name is Matthew Smith. I spoke at the last meeting. I'm a previous owner of the property and work with Troy.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add?
I understand what you're all saying about the building. The lot line, as he is talking about, the privacy fence, on the one side it is on the property line, on the other side it is not, which is on the west side it is not on the property line. We brought it in five foot so that people would have plenty of room, which is about, I'd say, between six and eight feet between the house and the privacy fence, so they'd have room to go in between there, because they have a door there. On the other side, it is right on the property line, because the lady next door has a dog. We was going to bring it in and just leave her fence there, but she asked us to put it there against her property line, against her fence line, because she has a dog that oftenly jumps over top of the fence. A little piece of concrete right there, it's a seven-by-33-foot piece of concrete. The lady has been parking on the street since they've been living there, which has been about 15 to 16 years, I don't know exactly, but I know it's around that area. They have had their car towed during the winter, because they park on the street, they don't have no other parking, so they park on the street. So they've had their car towed because of snow. Snow ordinance, your car sitting out there, they tow it. So when I, she's been parking in that parking lot for all these years, that Les had owned it for 15 years. So I told her, I said, "Okay, I need this little spot right here." So that's why we poured her a seven-by-33-foot piece of concrete, so they no longer have to park on the streets, they have no problem with the snow ordinance, and we take care of the snow anyway on our own property, so we just thought we'd be polite and do that, nice, whatever you want to call it. And she watches the property, takes, you know, just keeps an eye on to it. So I understand where he's coming from, we got to go there to get the sets back through the other board, but this property's been being used for all these years as a commercial building. I'm not asking, when he told me to pick the several things out that we could use it for, we just more or less work on Cushman's, and I have a contractor's business. I flip houses, and he flips houses here in the Des Moines area, you know? We just wanted to be zoned so I can get, you know, some of my money back, because I've soaked a lot of money in this property, so I can continue building my business. The more money that I have in my pocket on a piece of property like this, the more properties that we buy, the more we redo, the more we pull our permits, the better off the whole city of Des Moines is, because we do south side, east side, north side, whatever.
So I think what Troy's been able to expound on a little bit is, he's put a lot of time and energy into the betterment of this property. In addition to the siding and the pouring stuff for the neighbors who didn't have off-street parking, he's put a lot of capital improvements into the property. One of the things that I think that you all have to consider tonight is whether to grant the rezoning efforts or to send it to the Board of Adjustments. The biggest challenge with sending it to the Board of Adjustments, and we understand that either way, what decision happens tonight, it's going to have to go there either way, right? So, but the biggest challenge that we have is the capital improvements that Troy's made on the property are sunk costs right now that are in the property that can't be recaptured to go back into operating expenses of his building, which is improving other properties around the city of Des Moines. So the banks won't lend money, so he can get a loan on the property to get the operating capital back. He can't sell the property to someone else who would buy it for the use of this property, because their banks won't lend on the property without a rebuild letter, and a 60% rebuild letter won't gut it. We've tried, we've been down this road before, and we've gone for a conventional financing. Lenders want 100% rebuild letter or greater than a 60% rebuild letter, so getting a 60% is might as well get nothing, in terms of trying to make it either marketable for resale or to get a loan on the property so Troy can get his operating capital back. So when you're considering your decision tonight, and our willingness to restrict the usage of the property is in an attempt to conform with the long-term plan of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is behind our efforts here. They've come and spoke at the last meeting, we've had barbecues with them over there, we've been to their neighborhood meetings. They're in favor of us being there, they're in favor of our restricted usage on the property, and this has been nothing but helping the value of the neighborhood and trying to conform with what they're trying to do. So the reason why it's so important to reiterate one more time is, we need to be able to either get a loan on the property to recoup costs so we can better the city elsewhere, or secondly, be able to sell it to someone who will be able to get financing on the property and not just restrict it to someone who's got cash to pay for it. So I hope that makes sense in why we're here tonight.
Can I ask you a question? When did you sell to Troy?
We actually buy houses, we've built houses in that neighborhood, we've been to that neighborhood for the last 10 years, and we bought it for the purpose of, we thought we might be using it for the same capacity. Troy actually does a lot of restorations on the homes that we buy and build, and he saw the building, he said, "I could really use that building for storage that I have and for usage in the vein of which it's being used right now." So we said, "If you want it, that's fine, we can find another building," and we sold it pretty much immediately after we purchased it to Troy.
How long has it been?
When was that, Troy?
It's been a little over a year, sir, about 13 months.
And it has been used for storage for your contractor?
Yep. Same things like siding breaks and things like that, plumbing supply.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? I'm going to open the public meeting. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Likewise, seeing none. Have anything else? Gentlemen?
We will go after this meeting, hopefully after you will in favor of this, we will go to the planning and zoning, make the necessary setbacks. If there's a buffer zone needed for the neighbors to put in shrubbery, we already have plans for that, we've been informed. They could add some, they might want some additional carpeting and parking in the back. We'll make sure that that is put in place. So whatever is necessary to conform with planning and zoning standards of what they want for a C2 usage, we'll be happy to abide by whatever they want us to do there. So our plans are to go straight from this meeting to the planning and zoning and implement their suggestions.
Well, you understand that you're going to have to be before the Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Anything else? I'm going to go ahead and call the question. I'm trying to remember, do we split this one out? Yeah. I think we, I think we'll take up A, whether it's in conformance, and the item would be not. Actually, I need a motion first, don't I? Do you have a motion?
We have a little discussion first, Mr. Chair.
That's what I was asking about earlier.
I want to ask a question.
Go ahead, Ted.
The, I would imagine this has happened before. What did we do the last time something like this happened?
I believe about a month ago, you had a request for a gentleman that wanted to utilize a property on Southwest 9th Street, it was about a 5,000-square-foot lot, for a plumbing shop. The staff recommendation and the commission recommendation was for denial of the zoning. They seek a use variance on that property. Again, too small, no setbacks to basically protect the surrounding residential uses from the intensity of commercial that could be allowed under C2. I know they've offered to limit the uses on this, but once again, as Jason pointed out, there's zero setbacks in that, so the rezoning on that plumbing shop just went to the council on Monday night, and they concurred with that recommendation on the plumbing shop, so we believe that we're being fairly consistent with our recommendations on that.
Yeah, I don't doubt that one, but the, so that gentleman would be in a similar situation with having, he's on an R160 site?
C1. He has actually C1 zoning.
He has C1, okay, well, these, so that's the difference between that one and this one.
Yeah. They were both asking for C2 zoning.
Right.
But he could get a rebuild on the C1?
The, I think the, are we closed on the public?
We're closed.
Part of it, okay. So, and the reason why we, the reason why we don't want to do this is because it's too small and it's right in the middle of the neighborhood. But the neighborhood seems to want it. Is there any other remedy that gets him?
The reason why we don't want to do it, I think, is because it's going to have to go through the, to the Board of Adjustment no matter what.
Yeah, but they can't solve his financing problem, and he wants a mortgage on the property, he wants to be able to sell it someday.
I think another difference is, is that the area has a lot of commercial, like right across the street is a very large warehouse, and just down the street is a large, large commercial concern. So I don't think this is the same as the one on Southwest 9th, in that that was completely surrounded by residential. So I, for one, think that we should go ahead with the C2, and then he can figure out the details with the rest of it, so I don't feel this is quite the same.
So is that a motion, Joanne?
No, that's just my opinion.
Great.
Then I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
That we do not deny, so we recommend approval, so it's against staff.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to find that they're not in conformance, and then we're going to recommend approval and upgrade.
Yes.
With restrictions.
With restrictions.
Yeah, with these restrictions that he's giving. So, Mr. Chair, you're taking those, A and B?
We're going to take up A first.
A, it's not in conformance.
It's not in conformance.
Like staff says.
So let's go ahead and take up A. All those in favor of indicating that it's not in conformance, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. It passes. And then we're going to take B and C up, which is to amend and then rezone with the restrictions that we have.
Limited C2.
Mike?
May I ask a couple questions? Have we heard from the neighbors on either side and the neighbor across the street?
We did, we did initially.
Ask me.
When we were here the last time, the neighbors came in.
Okay. Do you have the consent map?
Yeah, there was a gentleman from the area, but I'm not sure if the actual neighbors are east and west.
Did both show up to our barbecue and think this generated?
The one, I mean, there's no doubt that the, you know, I sat down and met with the applicant for probably a good half an hour or so. He's a really nice guy, and he's gone out of his way to help his neighbors. I don't think that that's an issue, it's more about...
That's the consent map, so. Those are the only cards we've received.
Hold on.
Any other discussion? Jason, do you have anything else?
Nothing, nope.
Okay. We're going to amend the 2020 Community Character Plan, and we're going to rezone the property as limited C2. Everybody understand that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Hold it, hold it.
Got to raise your hand.
Curly.
So you're not going for denial of parts being saved?
Not this one.
Right. No, the motion is not to deny, the motion is to grant.
The motion is to overturn.
Right.
So can we vote again, please?
You've got to hold your hands up so we can get...
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Of the motion.
Of the motion. Of the motion, not of staff, of the motion. Okay. Opposed, same sign. Three of us.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say why I opposed. I have no problem with these people. I think they run a good operation. My concern is with the longevity. The zoning runs with the property, and it's a tiny property, and I know things are going to be stored outside, and that's my only concern, but I think they do a nice job with the property.
I'll say the same thing. I agree with Mike, but if you look at the map that's in front of you, the area is all residential in there, and I know there's a lot of commercial on the other side, and if you look even farther than what you can see on the other side, you'll also note that there's a railroad track. The Union Pacific has a number of tracks that run behind it. That's the old Armstrong plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we've done for years and years, tried to keep them from encroaching into the neighborhood, and I'm concerned, so. Will, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I concur with what you're saying, particularly thinking about a tire shop. I've seen tire shops in the city, and I wouldn't want to live next to a tire shop.
Thank you. It carries.
Going to go to the council.
Yeah, we'll go to the council, you can just call, we'll tell you the names.
Okay, we're going to take up item number three, request from David and Ladonna Walker for review and approval of a site plan for British Motors paving improvements under design guidelines for vehicle display lots on property located at 604 Southeast 6th Street and 517 Scott Avenue to allow expansion of an existing non-conforming vehicle display lot. The property is also located in the downtown overlay district, requiring application of the administrative design guidelines for that district. Jason, you're presenting on this one, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, this is Ariel identifying the subject property south of East MLK, on the east side of the river, corner of Scott Avenue and Southeast 6th. Response map, no responses. Here's a, an area, I'm not sure on the date. If you read the staff report, there's a lot of history to this case of enforcement going to the board, and we're kind of on the tail end of that, kind of getting things wrapped up. So, but just to get you familiar, this is an area where there's pavement, there's two existing buildings here, they're proposing to pave this area, have some display in here, and I'm going to show some photographs, if I wanted to get you kind of familiar with what's there, generally speaking now. So this is the corner of Southeast 6th and Scott, looking back towards the south and the west on the site. Looking to the west along Scott, that gravelled area to be paved. Looking south along Southeast 6th, moving further down Southeast 6th to the south, this is a, and I'll cover this in the staff recommendation, but this is a drive approach that we're recommending be removed. Scott, looking back to the east, this area is going to be restored with turf, and the western perimeter of the property down an alley for the joints, and then just kind of the opposite view from that alley. There we go. So, site plan, they showing the existing buildings, there's the existing paved area, new pavement. The display actually would be limited to an 11-by-30-foot area up here, there would be three parking stalls here and two down here for the, for employees and customers. They do have a fenced-in area that would stay, and they would do a recycled milled asphalt product. This would just be for storage of vehicles that are there waiting to be...
No, I concur with what you're saying, particularly thinking about a tire shop. I've seen tire shops in the city, and I wouldn't want to live next to a tire shop.
Thank you. It carries.
Going to go to the council.
Yeah, we'll go to the council. If you just call, we'll tell you the names.
Okay, we're going to take up item number three. Request from David and Ladonna Walker for review and approval of a site plan for British Motors paving improvements under design guidelines for vehicle display lots on property located at 604 Southeast Sixth Street and 517 Scott Avenue to allow expansion of a, of an existing nonconforming vehicle display lot. The property is also located in the downtown overlay district, requiring application of the administrative design guidelines for that district. Jason, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, as the commission, this is Ariel identifying the subject property south of East MLK on the east side of the river, corner of Scott Avenue and Southeast Response map, no responses. There's a, um, an area, I'm not sure on the date. If you read the staff report, there's a lot of history to this case of enforcement going to board and kind of the tail end of that, kind of getting things wrapped up. So, but just to get you familiar, this is an area where there's pavement. There's two existing buildings here. They're proposing to pave this area, have some display in here, and I'm going to show some photographs. I wanted to get you kind of familiar with what's there, generally speaking now. So, this is, um, the corner of Southeast Sixth is Scott, looking back towards the south and the west on the site. Looking to the west along Scott, that gravelled area to be paved. Looking south along Southeast Sixth, moving further down Southeast Sixth to the south. This is a, and I'll cover this in the staff recommendation, but this is a drive approach that we're recommending be removed. Scott, looking back to the east, this area is going to be restored with turf in the western perimeter of the property down an alley for the joints, and then just kind of the opposite view from that alley. There we go. So, site plan, they showing the existing buildings. There's the existing paved area, new pavement. The display actually would be limited to an 11 by 30-foot area up here. There are going to be three parking stalls here and two down here for the, uh, for employees and customers. They do have a fenced-in area that would stay, and they would do a recycled milled asphalt product. This would just be for storage of vehicles that are there waiting to be repaired, so it has to be licensed and operable, you know, vehicles, not, it's not, can't be junk and debris and salvage. And that's in accordance with the kind of enforcement procedure, and I won't go into a lot of detail on that, but we're showing that area being restored, landscaping meets the C2 landscaping standards. Really, it's pretty straightforward. We are recommending approval. I, I think really the only thing, the only conditions of note, and I know that, I believe that they would like to not tackle the cost of removing this, but we feel that it's important, as you can see from those pictures, it, it's just too easy to get back in this area, which, you know, here's, you know, a grass turf area and then fenced in back here. So, that's part of our recommendation. And then, kind of our standard recommendation for trash enclosures is that it be constructed with masonry walls with a solid steel gate. They are showing an enclosure here, so that's just a kind of another detail. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please have him come forward. Give us your name and address, sir.
Chris James, Davis Brown Law Firm, 215 Tenth Street, Suite 1300, Des Moines, Iowa. Only have really one comment, and that is on the entryway right here, a little bit behind that. That was not, that was actually put in when the city redid Scott and Sixth Street, that intersection. And, um, we, our client didn't ask for it, they put it in, not sure why, so it doesn't seem equitable to now put it into a site plan that now we have to pay to remove. Our plan is to see, ask the city engineer to, um, come in and remove that if they have that in their budget, and ask them to actually come and do that, but we don't think that should be part of the site plan, as we didn't put it in to begin with.
Any questions? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none. Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Likewise, seeing none. Chris, you need any additional time?
No.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any, first of all, is there a motion? Mike's moving staff. Is there any discussion?
In regard to that concrete, that, isn't that in the city driveway? Is that why the city put that in there? And it doesn't really seem appropriate to have them remove it if the city put it in.
May I?
Yeah.
Sure. It's, whenever the engineering, whenever they go through redoing streets, it's their standard protocol that if there's a, an existing curb cut, drive approach to replace it, kind of keeps them out of legal trouble with different property owners. So, at the time that they were doing that project, there was a drive approach there that they were replacing. And, so, it's new, but it's, there was an approach there previously, so that, they wouldn't have put one in otherwise.
Had they previously used it?
Uh-uh.
You didn't even use it?
There was no abandonment of it at that time.
That's correct. It hadn't been abandoned.
Sounds like a real communication situation.
Well, there's a long history, but if you saw from those photographs where that drive approach is, that's an area where we had issue with them putting vehicles where they shouldn't be, and if you recall the.
Yeah, I do. They weren't putting.
So, that's the drive approach.
So, I guess to clarify, at the time that driveway was put back in by the city, we had no right to take the driveway away. Now, they've had to come in for a new site plan review. We have the ability to review that and to limit the illegal activity that was occurring on the property. We're recommending that that, that driveway be removed, and that that be the applicant's responsibility. Mr. Chair.
Tim.
I, uh, they, they might not have wanted, but it certainly shows by these pictures that they've been using it.
Okay.
True.
I, I have to say that, uh, this lot has never been, you know, an asset to the corner, but I have noticed that they are doing a lot lately to clean it up. So, I do appreciate that. And in that vein, I'm wondering if there would be a certain amount of time that could be given to them to do this, because this isn't going to be something they probably would budget for immediately, so.
A lot of the cleanup is the result of an enforcement action. We had to go to court on this property to get the enforcement done, so.
Yeah.
I would say a lot of the cleanup has been to comply with the court order on the property.
I'm glad to see that. But that wasn't my question. My question was, you know, about the, how much time they would be required to, to comply.
The, uh, I guess I don't have a question, maybe just comment like Tim. There, this isn't any different than, than any of the landscape type things that we do on every project that comes through here. When, you know, when a property wants to change, needs to get brought up to the current standards, just like we do on Locust Downtown, so I don't have a, I don't have a problem in the world with having them get rid of that entry.
I'm not really either. I was just wondering what kind of timeframe they would be required to do it in, and would that be workable for, for them and their budget?
Well, I would, I would say that, given the set of circumstances about what the city has had to go through to try to get this area into compliance, I would not be in agreement with giving them any more time. I think it's, the, the cleanup there was long overdue, and taking out that access and getting it, the curb there like it should be, would be a real advantage.
Any other discussion? CJ?
I think it needs to be done.
Okay. If not, I'm going to call a question. Well, have we had a motion? We had a motion.
Yeah.
Jack?
I'm going to move staff if somebody hasn't done that.
I think it's already, yeah. I forgot, because, you know how it is, when you get old, I just, anyway. All those in favor? Now, remember, this is site plan. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign, acclamation. It passes. Staff has been, staff's recommendation is passed. Okay. Item number, item number four is a request from Prytan, Prytania? I'm sure I messed that up. Prytania LLC, represented by Jason Simon, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines in NPC districts on property located at 2932 Ingersoll Avenue to allow conversion of the existing 6,489 square foot building from a retail use to a restaurant use with a proposed addition of an elevated deck on the north side of the building for outdoor use. Jason, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes, I'll give a quick presentation and get to the heart of the, of the, the application. Ingersoll, south side of the corridor between 29th and 31st. Response map, no responses, some photographs, front facade, former, um, video rental building. And, uh, the applicants represented brought some revised or colored up drawings, so I'll go ahead and show those to you. Basically, I think they're, to just summarize, they're working towards the staff recommendation, and I'll just hit on what I think are kind of maybe the little differences. So, you have the building, you have the deck in the front, some landscaping, existing parking, dumpster located in the back. This is a rough-sawn cedar product that would be painted gray and placed over the top, almost like a Lieber kind of, um, material over the concrete block. The deck in the front, railing, the composite decking bottom. I think really the big. They were showing that, the one with the staff rep. Kind of going to explain that with, um, how, you know, why this is their best, their best fit for them. I think we really had. We just had some really basic notes, uh, just, uh, the screen ripped out in the pinnacle. We had, the number three, they addressed. Number four, they're showing kind of compromised, oh, let David walk you through that. They changed the notes to use the light, they think it lasts, so it's more, they're using the screen. They, um, they didn't get here comfortable with the settings, and I think that's pretty much it, so. Happy to answer any questions I have.
Any questions?
Are there existing trees on the property? Because it is an acre of land.
There are maybe, you know, very small ones in the back. I don't, hopefully, let me see, make sure it's up front. I think the area in front of it actually is kind of, is the water extension, it kind of dips down. Obviously, this is Ingersoll Street, so there might be a couple of small trees in the back. No, they did. Addressed that.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Will?
Um, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember staff recommendation, um, resuggesting that the treatment on the front facade be stretched around the east end of the building. And is that, is, is that what, is, the plans that you're showing or the drawings are updated from what we received?
It doesn't reflect on this, but I know that they, um, they indicated email that they were comfortable of doing that. So, I, I'll let David speak to that. My understanding is they were happy to bring this back about 20 feet, wherever it makes sense.
That was my question. Thank you.
Ted?
Jason, the, the, the property next door is, to the east is for sale.
Okay.
Um, and, um, I think the reason why you were, you're asking for, um, you're asking for the siding to go back a little ways, because that's where the building next door starts to block it?
Well, as you, there's, there's some separation between, maybe the area I'll show, and as you move down the street, whether you're walking or you're driving, you're going to see down in between the buildings?
About that far.
Yeah, about that far.
Because the building next door to it blocks it.
That's correct, yep.
Um, and that building next door, being for sale, might, you know, potentially maybe that, all of a sudden, you can see the side of that building. What, what's the?
You mean if it was tore down?
If, for instance, it wasn't there anymore.
Well, the NPC, if it was re, if the building's rebuilt, if a new building's built, it's going to have to be built forward. So, it's always going to have, any building that's on that property is always going to be up front. Obviously, if there's a period where it's vacant and it's just been cleared, just to hold it until development occurs, you will have, however long that is. But that's, that's kind of like in downtown, where we have buildings where the main facades, they're nicer than the interior ones. They may, we may have them wrapped around, but.
So, you don't anticipate any scenario where it would make sense to have that fully sited on, on the east?
No. And I'm not sure even if, like, say, the, if that went away and became parking for this property and was never developed, I, I don't know if it's, I mean, you still have this building forward, so your views, you're going to have more review, but it's still not going to be strong. And then, I'd also wonder about kind of the fairness to the property owner of this is, you know, having them paid to have it all the way back here when really most of the views of that, even if it's building gone, are really going to be up, up here.
But the district plan that recently passed calls for 360 degree, um, design consideration, and I, and I completely understand why it is the way it is. I'm just kind of kicking around.
Sure, no, it's great, good, great, great question, so.
Any other questions?
Yes, one more.
Will?
On the, we're looking at old drawings, so maybe it's been, you know, addressed, but on the drawing for the west elevation, there's a sign actually that appears, I'm on the front elevation on the north facade, but it doesn't appear on the north elevation drawing.
It's, uh, it's actually right here, and this is just, you're looking at it.
Yeah.
And the signage on here is very conceptual. I think they were just trying to give us a sense of what it might be like.
No, but those, that isn't what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the.
Isn't it?
Let me see. Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
This is actually where this.
You're right, thank you.
Kind of comes out a little bit.
You're looking at the profile.
It's okay. It's, it's tough, I know.
No, this is a great project.
Woke him up. Thank you, Will. Joanne?
Um, I'm looking for, and I know they have to have one, this is not the issue, but I don't see anywhere on anything where they're going to be putting this grease trap and how it's going to affect anything.
I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
Anything else? Jack?
I don't want to unduly compound problems here, but can you explain the parking?
The parking?
Right. Having, once upon a time, I was in movies. I'm recalling that the parking was kind of complicated, and I, I saw some discussion of parking at paragraph D, I just.
Basically, they're proposing to maintain the lot that's there and kind of keep it organized how it is. They do have more than enough spaces to meet the NPC requirements and have some adjoining on-street parking. With the tightness of the lot, I, I'm not, and where the building is, I don't know really what more could be expected. They really, I mean, they only have one opportunity for a drive, you know, you know, circulation's always easier if you have two driveways, but this is, it's just not really option a lot of places on Ingersoll.
I just wanted to hear you say that the parking was adequate.
Okay.
Is that what you said?
Yes, in a nutshell, it's adequate.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Jason, will you please have him come forward?
Good evening. My name's David Churchill, 20701 Kirkwood Street, Milo, Iowa. We try to address staff concerns. I understand you're concerned with wrapping it around on the east side of the building. There's very little space there, and I know if they develop that next lot, it'll probably be a drive there of some sort. So, I'm certainly willing to wrap it around that 20 feet or the first construction joint. We'll go from there. I, I do appreciate the time that was taken. We got it in just at the last second, and the exterior finishes were explained to me over the phone. So, it was a, it was a quick thing. So, is there any questions I can answer?
Any questions, Joanne?
Um, yeah, I was looked over everything, and I don't, it, this is a new restaurant, so you're going to have to be putting in a grease trap somewhere and having access to it from somewhere, so.
My understanding is that the plan right now is the grease trap goes between the front door and the street in the drive, with the double, um, manhole covers there.
Underground.
Underground, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's got to be underground.
The, the issue right now we're trying to work through is there's also a onsite private storm line that goes in there that collects from the existing detention basin. So, they're trying to shoehorn it in, but it will be underground in the drive.
Right in the front?
Well, it'll be in, yeah, between the front door and the, and the deck access.
With this new districting that has been just recently approved, all the owners up and down the street, I know this won't have anything to do with the way we vote. Are you guys committed to that, or thinking that's a great idea?
I'm familiar with it, and I don't know if the.
Pretty huge.
Representative has talked to them, or is it even aware of it? But I know personally, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah.
Greg?
Um, just regarding the, the cedar that might get put on the front, personally, I think that it would be better if it could be stone or the glass windows that are there, just from a permanence point of view. You know, wood just might not last as long as, as the glass or the masonry that's there, and so I think you should carefully consider that. I know you talked of shortening up the windows or whatever for booths and something inside the restaurant. It would be far better to leave the windows alone and just put a, something dark on them or something so that the look stayed the same, rather than attaching cedar to it, which to me would look like some kind of infill that's not. to me would look like some kind of infill that's not permanent.
Absolutely, it's infill. We considered doing split-faced block to try and match what's there. Obviously, it came down to an economic decision.
That's why I said I, personally, I, I don't mind how the windows look, and if you could just cover it up with a dark film or something.
Originally, the dark film is what we wanted to propose, and staff recommended something that was light or...
Well, I'll disagree with staff then.
I do like the idea of being able to see in and see out. The horizontal aspect of this is, is a overlay of an angular steel piece, so it really isn't wood. And detailing it, it will be an interesting process, but it's, it's held away from the face of the building to give it a shadow effect.
You're talking on the upper part?
Correct.
And I guess I was, I'm okay with that. On the lower part, I guess I thought you were talking about cedar basically covering up where the window bottoms were.
Correct, that's, that's...
And that's what I was referring to.
If we need to make it something different, I'm sure that the owner can be maneuvered in that direction. With regards to the trees in the back, I don't believe there are any existing trees on that property. I think the trees are on the property behind it.
There's someone a lot line on the west.
Yeah, and it's volunteer trees or whatever you call them.
So the drawing is kind of like having mountains in the back, right?
Yeah, that's a pretty picture.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Will?
Dave, do you have a, an east elevation of the building, a drawing?
Um, yes.
This sign is the one I was talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. That sign is in the, he wants a paddle sign in the front.
No, I'm asking because some of my colleagues were questioning me, but that's the sign I was asking.
Oh, okay, yeah, there is one there. He wants two paddle signs and no building sign. Those are just an idea. I understand it go under a different permit process.
Thank you.
Greg? Or Mike?
Also, I don't see it on the landscape plan, although in the elevation, I see some, but I think it's important in front of the deck that you're building over the detention area that we have some dense shrub material to kind of screen the bottom. And I know you've shown it on there, but I don't see it in the plan.
Right. We'll put something in there that, that does that. My biggest concern with that is that we have this detention basin that's now fully, has grass on it. Now, I'm gonna put a deck over it, and the grass is gonna die. So in essence, I'm gonna have to maintain that volume in there. But yes, we'll also put some...
Well, that detention basin used to have washed river rock in the bottom some time ago, I remember, when we worked on the Ingersoll project, and so that could go back.
They're covered in or silted in.
Well, that could go back, though.
So we have to go back and, and put some fabric in there and probably put the river rock back, because if we don't, it'll just erode away.
Ted, you have something, or?
Yeah, I, I see the landscape plan will be administratively approved, and I would imagine that the, that the staff is gonna approve something that, that is similar species to the, this Ingersoll streetscape.
Yeah. And if you want to make some, just some suggestions to that in any motion, that'd be great. I mean, just reference that landscaping you want to see there.
Looks like it's gonna be your motion, Greg. Jack?
I refer to my LA colleague.
I have a question that may not be answerable at this point. Is this a business plan, a 2AM closed business plan or otherwise?
I, I have no knowledge of that. I don't have a clue. He is the same owner of Alba, and I don't know what their hours are, I assume. You might make the assumption that it's the same, I don't know. Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
I think it's legal to know who it is.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
I don't know if there's a history there.
Seeing none, seeing none, David, do you have anything else?
No, I just thank you for your time.
All right.
One comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, you had a comment?
Just, just one comment. Tim, you'd asked a question about the Schmid. I just want to clarify, the property is already in the existing Ingersoll Schmid that runs from 28th to 31st. There is a proposed new Schmid that is expanded. That has not been approved yet. The hearing on that is by council next, on the 17th. But I, I just need to clarify, we cannot tie support of the Schmid proposal to, to any decision, okay?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak? And actually, there's nobody in the room, frankly. So, well, I, yeah, the reporter's here. Are you gonna speak in favor or in opposition to this? Okay, thank you. It's terrible. The people at home are going, you guys are nuts. Anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and close, particularly me. Terrible. Anyway, we're gonna close, go ahead. There you go. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we have a motion. Greg?
I will attempt one.
Okay, work for me.
I'll move staff, but I'd like to revise, I think item three, having to do with the window treatment, rather than, it could be filled in with concrete block, I'm okay with, but I don't really want it covered with horizontal cedar. So I'd rather have it just covered with dark film or something, if necessary.
So instead of saying covered with horizontal cedar, it'd be covered with dark film?
Yep. Or concrete, or concrete block. Yes, Jason?
I just want to ask for clarification, so when we go to implement this, we know we're talking, you say, you're suggesting like the area below be, oh, can we get the document, Kim?
Yeah, the, the lower portion is what I'm talking about.
Lower portion, right. And that was another idea that we had too, that, so this would stay clear, glass or white, and this would be dark, either dark film or concrete block.
Yes.
So you're gonna say the lower front facade?
Yes.
Where it says, the eastern window opening on the, on the front facade, so it's saying, on the front facade, it would say on the lower front facade, right?
Yeah, and it really should say it wherever it's, either east, west, or north, they really could be treated all the same.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a couple of things, and Ted, and, yeah, just to clarify, on the front, they, they have the full-size windows, they're opening, something down doors. And we had talked about the staff report, that maybe you should have that here with the full glass, and that maybe these could be up higher. So their compromise was to bring it straight across with this down here. So I understand from Greg is that this is fine, this needs to be the light tinted glass, this should be clear, or clear, and these should be clear or lightly tinted. And if they have glass, if they leave the glass in down here, it can have a film over the lower part, or it can be replaced with concrete block and have a range of light.
Yes. Your understanding correct.
Okay.
And then, just on seven, has to do with the landscaping by the planning director, but it should match the Ingersoll streetscape plant out. And unfortunately, I don't remember what we used.
I'm sure I have it written down somewhere.
You have it.
Everybody understand the motion?
So Greg's motion is keeping the cedar horizontal, tries to check.
Showing metal.
No.
The, the upper portion, as I understand it, is a metal angle, and there wouldn't be cedar down on the lower portion. Is that, how I under, yeah, okay.
You got that, Will?
You got that, Will?
All right, he's good. Any further discussion, or is there any discussion, I should say?
And Greg, are you gonna say anything about the shrubs in the front, or not? Or is that just left up to?
No, he did. You want dense plantings in front of the deck to match the Ingersoll street?
Ingersoll street.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Interpretive correct.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Greg's motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. It passes. Thank you. Mike, you have staff report?
Yeah, three things. First of all, on Monday night, council made two new appointments to the commission effective January, your first meeting in Jan, only meeting in January. Dory Brials and Greg Guadie are going to be on the Plan and Zoning Commission, so we now have a full 15 members on the commission.
Greg?
The second item is, well, I'm sorry, I'll let Greg discuss that one. The other item I have is that you'd asked about P&amp;Z commissioner training. I got an email on Monday from ISU Extension, and they travel around the state and have Plan and Zoning Commission training that they offer at set locations annually. April 9th is a Tuesday evening, and they will be in Johnston, that is the closest to the Des Moines metro that it'll be. It's 5:30 to 8:45. There's a brief dinner at 5:30 to 6:00, and then the training is 6:00 to 8:45. It's at the Johnston Hilton Garden Inn, and it is $45 a person. We will cover the registration, the city will cover the registration for the commissioners this, for this, but we need to confirm who can go. So if at the next meeting, you can get back to me and confirm whether or not you're able to attend that, we, we hope that everybody can, so that we can get you registered and go ahead and pay the registration for you to attend. Once again, that's April 9th, it's a Tuesday evening, 5:30 to 8:45.
Send us that.
Can you email it to us, Mike?
Yep. That's it. Thank you.
Greg? RNO?
I haven't had an RNO, but I hear that we will next Wednesday.
All right. Any other?
Do you want your nominating committee to report?
Can we take that up in January? Take that up now?
Your, your nominations are the first meeting of Jan, according to the bylaws, I believe, are, are the first meeting of January, and then you vote the first meeting of February.
Well, we're ready whenever you want.
Thank you. I really appreciate all, all the work you guys do. I mean, seriously, people here do untold amount of work that people will never see watching on TV. You know, I really commend Greg. I know that RNO is, is a huge task. I know. He's, yeah, it's not a big deal, but, but, it hasn't been, but it, but I know it, it can be. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work this year, and we've got one more meeting, so if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.